6:29, we'll go ahead and open up the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School Committee for May 25th, 2022. Can we have a roll call? Here.
Freetown-Lakeville School Community, this week's tragedy in Texas has us all heartbroken for our fellow educators, students, and their families. The tragic loss of life involving another school shooting remains a heavy burden on all school communities. Helping to ensure our students and staff members remain safe continues to be my top priority. This includes shared responsibility for the town. As many recent families be assured that students and staff members remains our number one priority as we close out the school year in Freetown and Lakeville. Do not hesitate to reach out to my office or other members of the leadership team at each school to help assist in any way.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. With that, I would just ask for a brief moment of silence for those that were impacted by that tragic event yesterday. If you would please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and eternal. Without an objection from the rest of the committee, we're gonna bounce around the agenda just to try and move things up here. And I will take item six on the agenda, which is the presentation to the school committee, which is the top 10 students for the current 2022 graduating class.
Thank you, it's a great honor to be here today and to present to you the top 10 students from the class of 2022. These 10 students represent the very best of Aponacuit. Collectively, they have taken numerous advanced placement courses and honors level courses. They are members of National Honor Society and have completed hundreds of hours of community service. They are student athletes, student performers, and club members who have Laker pride and who are a delight and a privilege to know. They have, as our core values proclaim, achieved, been resilient, engaged in honorable behavior, and advocated for themselves and others. Each of these young men and women has summarized his or her parting thoughts and will approach the podium to share them with you tonight. Riley Levrault, number 10, is very eager for her senior night lacrosse game. Please, Riley.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Riley Levrault, and I am number 10 in the class of 2022, meaning I just barely snuck in here. Throughout my career at ARHS, I have been a pretty involved student, as you can probably tell by my quick leaving today. I am a three-sport varsity athlete and have been since my sophomore year. I am the treasurer of student government, the secretary of National Honor Society, and a Laker leader. My involvement with the school has left me a lot of varying memories over the past four years, but the memories and friendships I have made at my sports teams will always be my favorite. Whether it's the bus rides to our away games, our team's pregame traditions, or practices where everyone on the team is in a silly mood, these moments have always been my fondest. These times have also given me a break from classes and homework, which is another huge reason I played so many sports in high school. In order to make the top 10, I had to enroll in many challenging classes, including six APs and many honors classes over my past four years. The most challenging of which would have to be AP Calc and AP Bio, which challenged me this year and last. The coursework was very difficult to understand, and even though I had amazing teachers, I still had a hard time getting through the tricky stuff. These classes and others were changed completely by my amazing teachers, who were forced to deal with me and my procrastination skills for many years. Ms. Nardi, Mr. Solomon, Ms. Fontaine, as well as Ms. Ferrera and Ms. Gray, who are my AP Calc and AP Bio teachers, have made my high school experience a lot easier to manage and have supported me through some very difficult times during high school where my motivation was at its lowest. I would like to thank them for their kindness and unyielding support and belief in my abilities. I would also like to thank my parents, who are proud of me no matter what, and my friends, who have given me much-needed relief from stresses of life over the past four years. I will miss them in Aponacuit with all my heart as I move to Wheaton College in the fall to study biology and hopefully join the field hockey team. To leave you all with a piece of advice, which I was asked to give. Like I said before, I'm a three-sport athlete, and two of these sports take place on grass fields. I am sure you have no shortage of individuals recommending a turf field at Aponacuit, but I would like to add my name to the list. I am sure you are aware of the immense numbers of benefits that come with a turf field, including the skill increase of turf players. As a field hockey player, I understand more than anyone how different a turf game is from a grass game, and players need to practice turf play and if they ever hope to play in college. By not putting one in, we are putting our players at a great disadvantage in terms of becoming college athletes and obtaining athletic scholarships. I hope you will deeply consider my recommendation, as I believe this field has been a long time coming and that with the influx of turf fields in the conference, it has become necessary. Thank you for your time, and thank you to Aponacuit for all that you have done for me and my future over the past four years. Go Lakers!
Enjoy seeing you tonight.
This is very, very quick. Good luck.
Number nine in the class is Emma Mara.
We can excuse you guys.
Good luck, folks.
Kinda boring.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Emma Mara, and I am here today to share with you all a little bit about myself and my experiences over the past few four years here at Aponacuit. I enjoy spending time with my family and friends. I also like to shop, go out to dinner, and go to the beach to achieve many of my goals, both in the area of academics and athletics. Academically, I have been able to earn a spot on the honor roll for each term of high school during all four years. I was able to become a member of the National Honor Society during my junior year and maintain this honor throughout my senior year. I also received the Women's Engineer Award during my junior year in addition to other various science awards in the fields of biology and physics. I work very hard and I take pride in my work. I also attribute my academic success to the continuous support and guidance from my teachers. During each year of high school, I participated in both basketball and spring track. I am a two-time SEC All-Star Honorable Mention and the recipient of the Girl Defensive for the Aponacuit Basketball SEC All-Star and the recipient of the Girls Coaches Award for the Aponacuit Spring Track Team. Once again, my accomplishments in athletics were also due to the positivity and dedication of my coaches. Some of my fondest memories here at Aponacuit have stemmed from my time on the basketball court and the track. These sports have taught me lessons that can be applied in my future life as I go on to continue my education next year. The bonds and friendships that have been formed are irreplaceable. Whether or not our basketball team had just won an important game or I myself earned a PR in a race, these are the moments I wish I could relive again. During my time here at Aponacuit, I also had the opportunity to take numerous AP classes. AP Psychology by far has been one of the most interesting courses I have taken due to the material study. AP Calculus, like Riley, however, has been one of the most challenging courses I have ever taken. Despite the difficulty of this class, Ms. Gray was really an awesome teacher. She challenged me, and I always enjoyed the jokes we would share early in the morning when I stood at my locker. Ms. Nardi, my AP Spanish teacher, indirectly taught me to look at life from a different perspective. No matter the day, she always has a smile on her face. Through Ms. Nardi's contagious smile, I learned the importance of being positive on a daily basis. Finally, I would like to mention my track coach, Emily Lozon, who has pushed me to be the best athlete I could be on the track. The love and support that I have received surely extends even beyond my teachers and coaches. I would like to thank my family and friends for the endless love and encouragement over the years. However, I would also like to give a special shout-out to my mom, who has shaped me into the person I am today. Without her constant support and guidance, I do not know where I would be. As I further my education at Bridgewater State University in the upcoming fall, I know I will forever hold on to the memories made and the lessons learned during my time here at Aponacuit. As I conclude tonight, I would like to make a recommendation to the school committee. I propose the remodeling of our concession stand with the addition of an outdoor bathroom facility rather than the porta-potties we use now. Overall, I want to thank you all for listening and for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight.
Number eight in the class, Lauren Goyette.
Good evening, my name is Lauren Goyette, and I am eighth in my class, which is fitting as eight has always been my favorite number. Outside of the classroom, I am the class president. I play field hockey, and I am a member of Student Council, School Council, National Honor Society, Laker Leaders, and DECA. I have also danced for 15 years. Next year, I will be attending Salve Regina University. I have loved my time here in the Freetown-Lakeville School District, and I honestly can't believe that it is about to be over. I've spent all year trying to wrap my head around it, and I still cannot. I simply can't understand how a 13-year chapter of my life is about to end. I became the person I am today here, and for that, I am so grateful. I have so many good memories here, but I've narrowed my favorite moments down to two. The first being my trip to Boston this year for DECA. My partner and I have done DECA since our freshman year, and although we qualified our junior year, this was the first year we competed in-person at states. We did not place, but it was a euphoric experience. My second and probably most special memory was my junior prom. Although it was in our parking lot, it was absolutely perfect. It was the first time my classmates and I were together after years of separation, and it just felt so normal, which is definitely not how I would describe the rest of my junior year. Looking back, junior year feels like a nightmare. Not only were we half in-person and half virtual, but our classes were two hours long. These conditions did not align with my learning style, so I really struggled to stay engaged. This was very unlike me, as up until junior year, I thought that spacing out was simply not looking at your teacher rather than having absolutely no idea what they were saying. Following that, I would advise the school committee to keep the schedule the way it currently is with six periods. I know last year, the four-block schedule was almost extended to this year, but I genuinely believe that our current schedule is more conducive with learning. For most students, meeting with their classes only two or three times a week is not enough to actually retain information. Additionally, with two-hour classes, staying focused is very challenging. Ultimately, our students excel with our current schedule, and I strongly believe our success would be diminished if we returned to four periods a day. To conclude, there are a few very informed people in the district who have helped shape me into the person I am today. The first is my fifth-grade teacher, Mrs. DeCosta. She encouraged me to move at my own pace and learn the way that made the most sense for me. Without her class, I know I would not be as academically successful. The next is my seventh-grade teacher, Mr. Baker. He told me nearly every day that my grades did not define me and that I was allowed to not be perfect, both of which I still remind myself every day. The last and most impactful is my middle school guidance counselor, Mrs. Toulon. Not only did she help get me out of my comfort zone and embrace my individuality, but she also inspired me to get involved with my community. Additionally, I would like to thank my parents, my dad for being my number-one fan, and my mom for being my role model. Ultimately, the Freetown-Lakeville School District has shaped me into the person I am today, and it will always have a special place in my heart. Thank you.
But we can say, Lauren, that we do plan to have six-period schedule next year. And number seven is Dylan Weiner.
Good evening, my name is Dylan Weiner. I've been a part of the National Honor Society for two years now. My favorite memories that I have of Aponacuit are the ones that involve my friends. The most fun that I had at this school was in gym class last year, which I had with my two best friends, Bobby and Maya. Every time we had gym, it was so much fun. Since we didn't have many classes together, going to gym class was a gift. I loved playing tennis with them because it was a chance to hang out by ourselves. My favorite memory is when we were playing tennis. It was me and Bobby against Maya, since she is a way better player than the both of us combined. To me, this was the best way to spend time together with friends, hanging out after class in the nice summer weather. The most challenging class I had was AP Art. This may come as a surprise, since I have taken AP Calculus, but art is a different ballgame. It is hard to be creative sometimes, and it's easy to be insecure about one's own work. Seeing so many great artists made it hard for me to like my own work. However, I tried hard to improve myself. Now I think that the progress I have made is clear. From my first piece to my most recent, I have gotten better at drawing. The teacher of this class, Mrs. Irwin, has helped me a lot over the past three years. Mrs. Irwin has always made me feel confident about my creativity, my artistic ability. When I would propose artwork that was very personal to me, she would always encourage me to explore my feelings. She would tell me that my technical skills are strong and refer back to my artwork for examples. Even when I was rejected from my top school, she was there for me and very supportive. So when I was being my own worst critic, Mrs. Irwin helped me to see the best in myself. In the future, I will be studying to become a fashion designer. As a person who is generally quiet, it is hard to find the right words to express myself while being scared of judgment from others. I was convinced that others viewed me as a mean or unpleasant person. To counteract this, I began to experiment with my wardrobe, and fashion stuck with me. I love wearing colorful and visually interesting clothing to express myself and make myself appear more approachable. Through the good times and the bad times, I have never lost my interest in fashion. For this reason, I couldn't imagine myself working anywhere other than in the fashion industry. I would like to thank all my friends and my teachers for helping me grow into the person that I am today. Otherwise, I wouldn't know who I am. To the school committee, I would make a short recommendation. I'd recommend helping students who feel different and alienated from their schoolmates.
Number six is Devon Sylvia.
Hi, everyone. My name is Devon Sylvia, and I'm honored to have the opportunity to speak before you tonight. I've cherished my time spent at Aponacuit, and I would love to share a little bit about my experience. To begin, I have been fortunate enough to have been awarded a variety of different accolades during my time at Aponacuit. In regards to academics, I've won various science awards in both chemistry and biology. I've also maintained a place on the honor roll each term. Furthermore, I was privileged to become a member of the National Honor Society, where I served as president senior year. Now, apart from academics, my hard work and determination has led to several accomplishments in my high school athletic career. I was named South Coast Conference's MVP for soccer this year, as well as an All-Star in years prior. Additionally, I was selected as a member of the New Bedford Standard Time Super Team for swimming four years in a row and received a South Coast Conference Sportsmanship Award. To continue, some of my fondest memories at Aponacuit have been during my senior year. The collection of culminating activities have truly made my senior year memorable. I adore my classmates, and being able to strengthen bonds and laugh with them before the next chapter of our lives began is truly gratifying. To add, Aponacuit has challenged me academically, and I am grateful for that opportunity. I opted to take a variety of different AP courses throughout my high school career, with each being very different. For example, I absolutely loved AP Psychology, simply due to the nature of the class and the content studied, whereas AP Chemistry and AP Biology challenged me and forced me to use higher-order thinking. However, I am thankful to have gotten to experience such rigorous courses as they enhanced my interest in that field of study. Furthermore, if I were to say anything about my time in the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District, it would be that I am forever grateful for the bond that I have created with the school personnel. They truly are exceptional people and deserve a whirlwind of credit. To start, thank you to the entire guidance department for always supporting me in all my endeavors and never once failing to put a smile on my face. To Mrs. Nardi for teaching me that life is unpredictable, but positivity and a smile will go a long way. To Mr. Gallant for always checking in on me and showing me that kindness is one of the most important qualities one can possess. And finally, to the rest of my teachers and the entire administration for being role models in my life and providing me with a sensational high school experience despite the difficulties the past years have contained. I would also like to thank my family, my friends, and my coaches for always believing in me and pushing me to be better each and every day. They have played a huge role in my life, and I am thankful to have them as I embark on my next journey. Next fall, I plan to attend Ithaca College, where I will study physical therapy and play soccer. To conclude, I would like to make one final recommendation to the school committee. I propose that the availability of AP courses be modified to allow students in their sophomore and freshman years to take part in these courses and further their educational opportunities while in high school. Lastly, I want to thank the entire school committee for all that you do and for listening to me speak tonight.
And number five, Katie White.
Hello, everyone. My name is Katie White, and I am proud to be an Aponacuit student. I'd like to take the time to talk about my experience at Aponacuit. Academically, I've received highest honors every term. I'm also the recipient of a Biology Science Award, as well as the winner of our school-wide Voice of Democracy contest. I'm also a member of the National Honor Society. Aside from academics, the past four years have been full of unforgettable memories, and I think that my favorite memory here at Aponacuit would be my junior prom under the tent in the field. I enjoyed how much our class came together after a tough year with the pandemic, and we were finally able to celebrate being able to have a school event after the long lockdown. We really appreciated the hard work that the faculty put into planning this event. In addition, I took numerous AP classes the past two years. The class throughout my high school career that was the most challenging but most rewarding was AP Literature and Composition. Although the essays were difficult and the reading load is heavy, my writing skills have largely improved in just one year, and I highly enjoyed the discussion-based class setup. A special school personnel that has impacted my life is Mrs. Nardi. Mrs. Nardi's constant kindness and positivity radiates onto her students, leading to a very positive classroom environment. There were times in school where I had to miss a week of school at a time due to other commitments I had, and Mrs. Nardi was always understanding and supportive of my work. Thank you to all of my teachers and other faculty for the education I received at Aponacuit, my classmates and friends for making school a place I looked forward to going to, and my family for supporting me through it all. Next year, I will be attending Villanova University as a biology major, and I will be swimming on the women's swimming and diving team. A small recommendation of mine for the school committee is to work back towards a school schedule where students are released at 1:43, as we have other after-school commitments, and it would be ideal to have more time after school. Thank you.
Number four, Chloe Rogers.
Good evening to everyone before me, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to be here tonight. As some already know, my name is Chloe Rogers, and school has always been an important part of my life. Since elementary school, I have seen school as not only a place to learn, but to make friends, have fun, and most importantly, be myself. Throughout my attendance at ARHS, I have won awards in Biology, Chemistry, Physics, and Anatomy and Physiology. I am also a 2022 Massachusetts DECA State Champion and captain of the Varsity Majorate Team as a feature twirler. However, before all of these scholarships, awards, and recognition was dedication. Hard work and effort have impacted my journey thus far, but mistakes and minute failures have driven me to be resilient and strive to reach beyond what I believe to be my capabilities. The words favorite or fondest are complicated to me, as my indecisive self can never just pick one. My mind jumps back and forth between laughing with friends while decorating our hall for pep rallies, and I will say, we have come pretty far since freshman year, getting to twirl fire at this year's Thanksgiving football game, and of course, all of our amazing school dances where we literally broke the dance floor. Despite all of those wonderful memories during high school, my fondest memory is all the way back in first grade. First grade is not only the year that I met a lot of people that I am still friends with today, but it was the year that we did our dinosaur show. We made papier-mâché eggs, danced, and gave interesting facts in a big show for our parents to come and see. It was the first time I felt included and part of something important. That year, I understood what it meant to not only have, but to use my own voice. Flash-forwarding back to today, the most interesting class that I have ever taken was Leadership. It exceeded my expectations, and it was one of the few classes that I have taken that was not only fun and engaging, but I was actively involved in learning throughout the class. I will admit, the style of the class was unconventional, thanks to Mr. Solomon, but I walked away recommending this class to almost everyone I knew. On the other hand, the most challenging classes I have taken at ARHS are AP Bio and AP Calculus. Both of these classes forced me to stop and think more. Not that they were necessarily hard, but they took more effort into learning the content of the material than I was used to. I would also like to personally thank my seventh-grade science teacher, Mr. Maderas. Walking into his classroom made me fall in love with science. Walking into his classroom made me want to pursue a career in the healthcare field. And most importantly, walking into his classroom changed the path of my life. It was his class where I finally felt like I was not only good at something, but I also liked it. I also would like to thank Ms. Ferrera, my AP Bio teacher and anatomy and physiology teacher this year, for guiding me through these complicated topics and furthering my interest in specifically biology. Apart from the support from the FLRSD staff as a whole, I would not be standing here without support from my family. I would like to recognize my mom, dad, and sisters for always believing in me no matter what and giving me a foundation of responsibility and respect. With their support, I plan to attend Vassar College in the fall, studying biology with hopes of becoming an orthodontist. As I reflect upon my time in the Freetown-Lakeville School District, I would like to offer one final suggestion. Although small, I feel that it would be much more efficient to stagger dismissal times for the high school. Having buses, students, and parents all leaving at once causes a nightmare of a traffic jam, not to mention many student drivers are inexperienced. I know I have personally sat in traffic in that parking lot for up to 30 minutes just waiting to get to the street, and I hate traffic. So if students are released in segments, then the flow of traffic could be reduced. Again, it has been an offer to speak in front of everyone. Thank you for your attention, and have a great rest of your evening.
And number three, Peyton Goodman.
Good evening, school committee members, FLRSD faculty, and fellow ARHS top 10 students. My name is Peyton Goodman, and it is my pleasure to speak with you today as third in the class in the Aponacuit class of 2022. At ARHS, I am a class representative of the Student Council, vice president of the ARHS band, a Laker leader, and a member of the math team and the club life. During my time at Aponacuit, I have been the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, Michael Lionis Band Award, as well as several science awards, including the AP Environmental Science Award, the Forensics Award, and Honors Biology Award. When not engaging in a school activity, I enjoy volunteering in the Pan-Mass Challenge for Cancer Awareness and participating in buddy walks for Down Syndrome awareness as well. Throughout my high school tenure, my favorite classes have been the science classes at ARHS. I also enjoy taking different electives, such as Art of Healthy Living. Furthermore, my fondest memories at ARHS Furthermore, my fondest memories at ARHS have been the field trips that I got to go on in order to learn more about the subjects outside of the classroom. One of my favorite field trips was when the AP Spanish class went to El Mariachis to speak and order food in Spanish. It was a great way for me to practice Spanish speaking while having fun at the same time. One recommendation I have to make Aponaquit better is to have the history curriculum include the study of various other countries and world issues. If more of the history classes included historical perspectives of other continents, then students will be able to understand history topics from different perspectives. To conclude, I would like to thank all the teachers at ARHS that have taught me the skills necessary to be a successful student and that gave me the tools necessary to be successful in the future. Additionally, I would like to thank my parents and two sisters for always supporting me throughout my high school career and for continuing to support me as I go into the next chapter of my life. I will utilize all the skills you have taught me when I attend Barnard College of Columbia University in the future to study psychology.
Please welcome our salutatorian, Caleb Procasini.
Sorry I'm late in for my attire. I just came from a lacrosse game in Born, so didn't have a lot of time in between.
Good results?
Yeah, 21 to 4. Good evening, everybody. My name is Caleb Procasini. I'm second in the Class of 2022. Next year, I will be attending Colgate where I plan to play football and study Biology on a pre-med track. I would like to begin by thanking the many influential people in my life. Thank you to my parents, grandparents, siblings, and other family members for your constant love and support. Thank you to my coaches, who have taught me so many important life lessons, allowed me to do what I love and have success at it. Thank you to my teachers for developing my mind and personal skills, and thank you to my friends and teammates for all the fun times and for making the past four years enjoyable. At Aponaquit, I play football and lacrosse, and I'm a member of DECA and NHS. I enjoy fishing, hunting, and weightlifting outside of school. I'm the recipient of numerous football awards. These include being named to the Massachusetts D5 All-State Team, the Snared Times Super Team, a SEC All-Star, a Shriners All-Star, a Jack Granal National Football Foundation Scholar-Athlete, and an Autogram Award nominee. I'm a two-sport captain on the football and lacrosse teams. I've also won the DECA District Competition three times, and an AP Scholar, and have won five Science Course Awards. I have so many phenomenal memories to Aponaquit that it's hard to know where to begin. Most of them began in the athletic fields. I have formed bonds with my teammates that will last a lifetime, and my time with them both on and off the field are where my fondest memories lie, especially winning the SCC Championship in football. I also have great memories in class of working on Spanish projects in Mrs. Nardi's class, debates in history classes, and labs with Ms. Ferrera in AP Biology. AP Calculus was an especially challenging course for me, with AP Chemistry close behind. Part of the reason for this was likely the fact I had a fully remote chemistry teacher during COVID, so I didn't have the greatest experience in this course. I particularly enjoyed AP Bio, as I love the sciences, and Ms. Ferrera keeps class very interesting and engaging while also doing a great job preparing us for college through the course. AP Spanish with Mrs. Nardi was a great experience as well, and all the more rewarding was my opportunity to apply what I had learned on missions trips to Guatemala and Honduras. While all of my teachers and coaches have been great, there are a few I would like to call out by name. I want to thank Mrs. Nardi for always keeping class lighthearted and interesting, teaching me that learning can be fun, and for being a resource and an outlet. She's always so receptive and willing to meet our needs, forming a collaborative learning environment that brings out the best in us. Thank you to Mr. Coet for teaching me how to look at things from all of the angles and perspectives. He taught me how to think critically and make decisions for myself, and chose a passion for his content that makes me, as a student, desire to learn more. And thank you to Coach Amor and Coach Fife for teaching me countless life lessons through the game of football, for always pushing me to be better, and for being in my corner in all aspects of life. As a vice to the school committee, I believe that some AP classes may need a little more structure, as there are some which far more adequately prepare us for success on the exams than do others. I also think that turf field would be a beneficial addition to the sports facilities, as this would enable us to practice and play in more questionable weather conditions and alleviate some of the stresses we've had recently with trying to find people to line the fields. Thank you for your time tonight and for the opportunity to speak.
Why do you think I don't stand up and say anything? Who's topping what he's asking? I'm just wishing him well at this point.
And now introducing our valedictorian, Karina Jacobson.
Hello, FLRSD School Committee, and thank you for the kind invitation to speak with you today. I'm Karina Jacobson, and prior to today, I had not verbalized this, but I am the valedictorian of the Class of 2022. Through a lot of luck, I am standing in front of you today. I am a student, a performer, an intern, a dreamer, and a go-getter. I have basically tried doing every activity imaginable during my time in the school district, and some I found more success in than others, to say the least. At Aponaquit, I have had the honor of holding various leadership positions, including being captain of the math team for three years, drum major of the marching band this year, and a class representative. Over the years in the district, I have received various awards such as the Music Award in Elementary School, Scholar Leader Award in Middle School, and most recently, the Superintendent's Award for Excellence. My greatest achievement, though, was being named Secretary of Defense for fifth-grade travel basketball. In addition to those positions and awards, I have also been able to serve the school and greater community in various capacities. Through peer tutoring in math, serving as the music director for the Community Recreational Theater Program, teaching Sunday School at my church, and coaching spring development for the soccer club, I have been able to share my love for some of the aspects of my life that have meant so much to me with others over the years. From September through last weekend, actually, I spent every Saturday interning at the Buttonwood Park Zoo, where I was able to care for animals and lead public encounters, where I got to interact with visitors and educate them about the animals I care for. This inspired me to do my senior capstone project on the connection between zoos and conservation, and I was even able to organize a field trip to take my classmates to my zoo for my presentation. Through my experiences there and in a class with a particularly ominous reputation for being difficult called AP Bio, I have expanded my knowledge and love for the sciences, and I am excited to share that I will be attending the Rosenstiel School of Marine and Atmospheric Science at the University of Miami this fall to study marine biology and ecology. I am very excited for the research opportunities there, along with the chance to meet many new people passionate about marine life. Throughout my years as a student, there have been some standout staff members who have helped me become the person I am today. I first want to acknowledge Mrs. Ekobachi. She will be giving me my diploma next week for good reason. In first grade, I began taking piano lessons with her. She has been there as a mentor for me since day one, really seeing me grow up into the musician I am today. Truly, she was the first one to open my eyes to the magic that is music. I also would like to thank those who really helped me along the way with the college process. Specifically, two people have been instrumental in the art of cutting down my 1,000-word essays to the required maximum of 300 words, when I was having difficulty doing so myself. Thank you very much, Mrs. Fontaine and Mrs. Hayes, for all of your help, both with the college process and for being two of my favorite conversationalists, even though I do sort of talk your ears off. To Mrs. Lever, thank you for all of the corny jokes. I know you used to appreciate how I was the only one to laugh at them, but that environment really fostered my love for science. Finally, I would like to thank Ms. Russo for being so supportive over the last four years. From encouraging me to join the math team and watching my math skills blossom over the years, to being there for me as a person and helping me realize how often I say a certain phrase, which is a focus of my graduation speech. She has always had my back, and I really have appreciated it. Outside of school, I would personally like to thank my sister Delaney for always being there for me since she was born. Even though it wasn't her choice whether or not to be around me in her early years, she is the person I can still always count on today to put a smile on my face. Although I had an absolutely incredible time growing up in this district, the recommendation I have for the future is to increase the opportunities for older students to interact with the younger students. Although many elementary school students have older siblings, coaches, or dance instructors that are high schoolers, there aren't many opportunities for high schoolers to assist in the elementary classrooms. Younger kids look up to high schoolers, and I believe that they could easily be inspired academically and creatively through assistance and conversations with the big kids. Whether we have more full-district networking opportunities, like Music Fest had functioned as prior to the pandemic, or we have more visits between individual schools, it will encourage collaborative learning amongst all students. Thank you very much for your attention, and I look forward to seeing you again at graduation next week.
Thank you for allowing our top 10 to present. I am so proud of all of the students that we have in school and so enjoy working with them. But this is new to me in this role to be able to work with the top 10. And I have to say, not only are they a delight, but I have to say it's one of the kindest classes I've been able to work with in my 21 years, not to say in that very, very kind class. So thank you for allowing them to present. Proud of you.
I will say, this is, for me, one of my favorite school committee meetings, and we've had a number of them, believe me. But it's impressive to not only see the academic accomplishments, but everything else that you do. It's just not the top 10. You're actually pretty amazing human beings with everything that you contribute to that. And we recognize, this is a culmination of 12, 13 years in this district, and the fact that you can recognize first-grade teachers, middle-school teachers, it's just a tribute to you guys. This list of schools attending the next steps where you go in your education is absolutely impressive. And I will, from my perspective, as someone that looks at resumes, keep being well-rounded. It's more than just the classroom. It's all the extra stuff that you do will take you far in life. So on behalf of the school committee, I thank you for coming. This is great feedback from you. This gives us a lot of fodder to think about as we continue to work forward. Believe me, the turf field is not the first time we've heard of this, nor the porta-potty. So we've heard those aspects of it. So definitely do. What we're going to do is take about a 15-minute break of the school committee. We have refreshments, and of course, if you guys want to stay after that, you're more than welcome, but I'm sure you guys have plenty of other things to do than to sit through the rest of our meeting for that. So we will take about a 15-minute break to about 7:30 before we pick up again, but please come have some refreshment. All right, we will continue on. I appreciate the bouncing around. So this is always a good event to hear for that. So I am going to go back through the agenda of certain items. First thing, real quick, again, for that, I'm going to go to item number five. Thank you, Boston, for hanging out with us for a little bit longer and for the ARHS student rep update.
All right. So on Friday, last Friday, we had a great pep rally, and we shouted out every sport, club, and award at our school. And on Saturday, prom was held at Whites of Westport, and the students had a blast. We're currently having Spear Week this week, and the students have dressed up as celebrity space theme, and it will be Dessert Day tomorrow. Grade 10 students just engaged in math MCAS this month, and grade 9 will take Bio MCAS in June. Seniors, they're on their final stretch. This is their last week. They've been taking finals this week and will be enjoying awards night, senior send-off, senior banquet, the senior walk, and then graduation. And then finally, grades 9, 10, and 11 will be prepping for their own finals in just a few weeks. That's really it.
Good job, Boston.
Thank you.
Question, are we talking dessert as in this, or is everyone being dressed up as the principal? I think dressing up as the principal would be a much better.
I just assumed those.
All right. Any questions?
Boston, what time does awards night begin?
I'll email you. You've got enough on your plate. I'll email you. Okay, thank you. Mr. Sylvia might have. It's Tuesday night.
Tuesday night.
All events and times are listed on your school website. That was from Renee. Don't shoot the messenger. Thank you, Boston. The other piece I just wanted to bring up to the top is under new business, AP ARHS Program of Studies Course Request.
Yes. We have my notes, but I can just say, sorry, that you've heard about Mrs. Nardi over and over again. You've really heard that name a lot. So we owe her an awful lot, but she's just such a kind, kind person, and she can teach every level, and the kids love her.
Well, I had taken the Program of Studies and pulled some things out that we hadn't used in a few years, and one of them was Spanish 5, because we've tried to push our students, "Don't take the AP." We have so many APs at this point that they have to make tough choices in their senior year. This upcoming year, we have eight students who are in college prep instead of honors. I don't feel like making that leap. So therefore, they're not going to take Spanish in their final year. So this year, I can say with confidence about our data, 18 students would take Spanish if the Spanish 5 was available in addition to the AP Spanish. So I was a little bit quick in making that decision back in the fall, so I'm asking that you restore that, because more students will be able to take Spanish in their final year as an elective.
I will entertain a motion to update the course of studies as requested. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Congratulations. That's really good.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you so much.
Great job, Kay.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. So we will go back up to the top of the agenda here, and item number three with public participation. Anybody would like for public participation? So please come to the podium, your name, and the town you live in, and...
Hi, I'm Susan Oyanuga. I live in Freetown.
Okay.
So I just wanted to start off by saying good evening to everybody and thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. I'm here today to discuss ongoing issues with my family and I have been facing. Racism is unfair treatment of people and the belief that certain races of people are superior to others. Discrimination based on color, clothing, culture, or religion is racism. Tolerance is the ability or willingness to tolerate something. Today, I stand here to inform you that my family and I will not tolerate this behavior any longer. We will not sit in silence in order for others to allow others to feel comfortable for their ignorance. We need change. Racism and racial discrimination have been allowed to happen in Freetown-Lankville School Districts for many years. I know this because my family and I live it daily. I have documented it well with local police as well as the Department with DESI, and results coming back with evidence of racial discrimination. Unfortunately, not much has changed, and I sit here today and demand a change in policy. I have spoken with many individuals, including teachers, counselors, principals, assistant principals, and superintendent in respects to concerns my family and I have with my children being called niggas, monkeys, being told to go back to where they came from, sit in the back of the bus, as well as students making monkey noises as they pass through to other classes, just to name a few examples. But many of our concerns seem to fall on deaf ears. I've also been told by most of the people who I have mentioned above that they are aware of the lack of diversity, and the problem is bigger than the school, it is in the community. With all respect, my family and I will not settle for that answer. I think that it is time to start educating people, because education is the most powerful weapon in which we can use to change the world. My children are missing valuable education time with issues that have not been resolved. It's year after year, week after week, and day after day. Just last week, my child brought this same concern to their teacher and was told, "You don't care about your education." the week, and that week has come and gone with no follow-up to these concerns. I was also referred to the handbook. I did find something titled Hate Speech on page 34, but there is no consequence listed as there is with other offenses. My family and I have been open to starting Diversity Committee for years. Just a week and a half ago, we were informed that currently the Diversity Committee is geared towards LGBTQ and not race or religion. Diversity should include everyone. Everyone deserves a positive, safe learning environment, and will continue, I will continue to advocate, not only for my children, but for others who come through those doors. I hope by bringing this to your attention today, this will result in a positive change. In the words of Nelson Mandela, no one is born hating other people because of the color of his skin, or his background, or his religion. People must learn to hate, and if they can learn to hate, they can be taught to love, for love comes more naturally to human hearts than the opposite. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask your name again, please? I didn't catch it.
Susan Oyenuga.
How do you spell that?
O-Y.
O-Y.
E-N.
E-N.
U-G-A.
Thank you very much, Susan.
You're welcome.
It's Baron.
What handbook, what school handbook?
This was the Upon Aguit.
Thank you.
We will definitely follow up with the administration about where this is currently for that. I can't say about change of policy, but I do appreciate your feedback and bringing it to our attention here.
Well, this has been going on for years, and I have gone through the appropriate channels, and nothing has been done, so this is my last resort.
Okay.
Can I just ask, what would constitute a change in policy?
I don't know. You've mentioned you'd like to see what a change of policy is. This is the first the school committee is hearing about this, so I would like to follow up with the administration as far as the complete picture, right? I appreciate your time in bringing it to our attention. Now, we wanted to follow up on the handbook aspect of it with the building principal as well as the superintendent for that, to see what we need to look into and what we need to address.
Okay. Will somebody get in touch with me too with any updates?
Well, as I said, we'll follow up with the administration, and we'll see where that goes from there, but you should hear a follow-up as far as what's progressing from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public participation? Seeing none, item number four, acceptance of minutes of May 11, 2022. I will entertain a motion to accept. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Thank you again for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Any opposed? And we have Ms. Fox's attention. All right. Furthermore, I will also entertain a motion to accept the executive session minutes from also on May 11.
Some more.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Lot of seconds.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Any opposed? And we have Ms. Fox's attention. All right. Furthermore, I will also entertain a motion to accept the executive session minutes from also on May 11.
Some more.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Lot of seconds.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention?
Abstention, yep.
Okay. We'll hang on to these until after everything's finalized there. Make sure my checkbox is, if I have everything, we are down to old business 7A. Did I hit everything else? Okay. FY22 budget update.
Included in your packet is the general fund overview for FY22 year-to-date through May 25th, 2002, May 22nd, rather, 2022. Our revenues year-to-date are $33.3 million, and expenditure budget balance after open purchase orders is $2.6 million. We are anticipating favorable results overall, based on our experience year-to-date and our current projections. Similar to the last few years, we are planning in prepaying allowable items, such as July, August, and September special education costs. The only other update I will make, which is not included in this report, is that the governor has filed an FY22 supplemental budget request, which, if passed, allows for a portion of unexpended funds for FY22, '23, and '24, up to 10% of net school spending in connection with our Chapter 70 funds, to be reserved in future years. That would need to be spent by the school committee by 2027. Again, this is if it's passed by the governor. I've heard from the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools that it's highly unlikely that the House or Senate will include this section in their version of the supplemental budget process, but there is always a possibility. This opportunity would impact our year-end closing. As a result, we are hoping for folks to advocate in any way for flexibility on spending for regional schools, and hoping for a resolution as soon as possible. The purpose of this funding is to allow flexibility in spending for years where we have cash infusions from federal funding sources such as ESAR. And that would update, that would complete my FY22 update at this time.
Didn't I already do an advocacy thing? It didn't get me anywhere, did it? I'll do it again.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Lee's? Just to dumb it down, what this will do is not require us to roll over to E and D, and we can roll over to, okay.
That's correct.
I wouldn't be too optimistic.
No. If I may, the reason for that is that there's still, most of the money's still going to the urban districts.
Sure.
And that's been the issue, and I know Ways and Means is aware of that. I just don't know this is going to happen.
Okay, moving on to 7B, COVID report and enrollment numbers, 2022, '23 school year.
I have a very brief report. I continue to provide you the numbers. We do see an uptick the last few weeks, but it has not been disruptive within the schools. We have 22 positive cases this week, pretty consistent with what the community numbers are. The update from the state level, we had a webinar today and received a memo from the commissioner. They're going to continue with the testing practice and reporting for the remainder of this year. So I'll give you the short version of this, what transpired today. For the remainder of this year, no surprise, through June. In the summer, districts will have the option to secure testing if they, if you run summer programs, secure testing to continue the practice, but no reporting to the state. And then in the fall, they are not only not, there is not currently a need to report, state is not including reporting, but they are also not supplying tests for districts. So if districts want to have some sort of testing mechanism in place, they would have to go through the statewide contract and secure tests that way. So that's really kind of to be determined, not real shocking news, continuation of kind of where we're at in relation. I do not see any changes needing to be made over the next 20-some-odd days of our school year as it relates, we're certainly open to anybody feeling as safe as they need to be, whether it be RASCs or anything that's happening, but I see no changes at this time within our district. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, do we have any update on like ninth-grade transition numbers or as well as school choice?
Go ahead, Greg. Yeah?
I'm actually barking on that. We're still waiting for the final numbers of the eighth graders going on. I'll have that ready for the next meeting.
June 8?
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Madeiras, could we get class size numbers for next year, estimates for next year at the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
You'll have anticipated numbers, and you'll have the transition. And not that I was looking down at my phone, Ms. Baron, but Mr. Zer did text me to say that this award night is 6 o'clock.
Oh, she's amazing.
She's halfway down the hall, and she got back. She said, her communication was, could you please communicate to Ms. Baron at 6:00 P.M.?
Thank you.
Any other questions on 7B? Seeing none, Freetown Vocational Subcommittee.
We do not have an update at this time.
Okay. Moving on to new business, FY23 budget.
Yes, just a short report here. The town meeting for Lakeville was held on Monday, May 16, where our budget was approved. Freetown's town meeting will be held on Monday, June 6, at the high school, where special town meeting is scheduled for 7:00 P.M., and the annual town meeting will follow at 7:30 P.M. And the legislation is still in the process of budgetary debate at the state level. We are hoping for the governor's budget to be finalized in July, a normal timeframe.
And we have the Freetown vote coming up.
June 6.
June 6.
That's correct.
And that is here at the high school.
All right. Moving on to 8C, food service management agreement.
Yes, so with the district's food service contract set to expire at the end of this June, and the district no longer being able to extend the agreement through pandemic exemptions, we went out to request bids from interested food service management vendors. We did receive an initial inquiry from two companies, but only had one official bid submitted at our opening on Wednesday, May 11. The bid we received is from our current food service contractor, Aramark, who has a 22-year relationship with the district. I am pleased to present to the committee on behalf of the RFP evaluation team, a request to vote to extend our relationship for another year with a management fee of $32,497, an increase of 3.2% or $997 from last year's fee of $31,500, which the increase is well below inflation. Through this contract and working directly with our food service director at our school, Aramark will also embark on a marketing campaign where they will begin to refresh signage, I believe to start here at the high school, to help bring more nutritional awareness to our students. As a result, I am recommending a vote from the committee to support awarding the contract to Aramark.
I will entertain a motion to award the food service management contract to Aramark for $32,497 for the school year 2022, 2023, and to consider four additional annual renewals in subsequent years.
Some more.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Just a quick question on the additional annual renewals. Is our percentage increases already contracted, or is that what would be future contract?
They're not predetermined at this time. We would come to the school committee for approval each year based upon their performance.
And with this, we would not go out to bid in the next four years? Is that what this?
That's correct, unless we were not satisfied with the services.
Okay.
But for 22 years.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion is unanimous. Reports to the committee, transition update.
Mr. Strauss is... Mr. Strauss will be at the next meeting, probably the next two meetings, and then we'll give an update at that time.
As far as any other business come before the meeting, I would ask Mr. Clark to give us a quick update on the successful event this morning.
I would echo that. It was a very successful, I think, senior breakfast. We had over 50 people in attendance. I believe they have a good time, but there's a lot of other people that are involved in this, so I'd like to thank Andrea and her staff for putting that on. I'd like to thank Mr. Madeiras. I'd like to thank Sheri and Steve for their attendance, and I would go beyond that and say that Steve has never missed a senior breakfast, in my knowledge.
Last breakfast.
And so, because I'm in my last year, I would like to transfer the responsibility next year to Steve to make sure that this program continues to go and maybe grow. So with your blessing, I would put you in charge next year of the senior breakfast.
I'd be happy to. I don't go for the food, it's just the pouring of the coffee.
He pours coffee, dear.
And the conversation.
If he takes on that duty, we may want to name the senior breakfast Mr. Robert Clark.
Yeah.
Give some thought to that.
Well, I will say, only on the basis that is guaranteed attendance by Mr. Clark, and we talked about Mr. Madeiras as well, so...
The seniors reminded me that I could sit in there next year.
That's not nice.
I wouldn't miss a free breakfast, that's for sure.
So I understand that the husband of one of our teachers, Jim DiTerra, did a beautiful serenading crowd.
That's correct. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that.
Yeah, so Jim DiTerra, although it was a last minute, oh my gosh, is it tomorrow morning?
Wonderful. Nice, really nice addition.
And last but not least, I'd like to thank the seniors for coming. People have a tendency to forget that a lot of this facility, the whole campus, is because the seniors voted for it and approved it. So they're kind of a forgotten number sometimes, but we won't have what we have because of them.
So true.
A big thank you to them for attending and for supporting us through the years.
And we did have the middle school, which I think was a great venue for them to come see...
That's correct.
I made my opening comments about the tragedy, but when you look at hope between the senior group that was there, sandwiched in with our top 10 kids and the hope and promise these kids, because I think we have a lot of things to be optimistic about in relation to things that are happening. On a positive note, and certainly the senior breakfast is one of them.
And I had the capability in my schedule, but I encourage others to attempt, attend, even for a little bit of time, because just the conversation alone with some of them is great, you know, for it. I know schedules are awful tough through that, but they were very much appreciative of this. You know, I know it was only one option for a breakfast instead of two, but I think it was great for them to come to the campus to see that. Some stayed longer, right? We had to flick the lights to...
Keep in mind, and restate the normalcy of this year, a couple of things happened. We finally brought this breakfast back, and we collapsed it, and we got folks on campus, and there was some anxiety whether they would come back. They came back and drove us this morning. I then later on this afternoon had the privilege, because I couldn't make tonight's, because it conflicted with our meeting, to go to the first Freetown Elementary School, school-wide assembly. It was the first time Mike had brought all the staff and students together for the in-school concert, which is going on right now, the night concert, and it was just great to see. You could see how happy the kids were and how we are heading, certainly in the right direction, but those are a couple of events and activities today that highlight a lot of exciting things that are happening.
I just need the date for this breakfast, about three months in advance.
Yep.
We can work on it.
Thank you.
You know, as I say that, because I'm tasking that.
Make it so, right? Ms. Baron.
Ready to make a note.
I just, I'm not sure if everybody knows, and I found out only quite by accident by a phone call, that we have a star here once again, Cara Lee. She's not only a star here, but Cara presented last week at a conference that she attended for a few days. Maybe you should explain what you, your presentation and what the conference was, but it's quite exciting.
Thank you, Sheri. It was a last-minute request from MasBO, the Mass School Building Officials, where all of our school building officials from the state get together and we learn overconference for a few days. And I presented with Train, our construction provider. We had an exciting one-hour session. I was very blessed to be part of that. And part of it, obviously, was for Train to drum up some business so we could talk about how great of a relationship we've built with them, but we really did get to identify what our deficiencies were originally, and how we addressed those through the construction project, and how the financing piece was easy to work through. So it was a great experience.
And we now have a referral program in place for...
Do we get a piece, right?
Is that the way it works now?
I really pushed hard to get some extra rebates. Right, right, right. So, yeah, I was happy to do that, and Train is working on getting some additional rebates as we speak, so I'm hoping that we can use that to infuse more...
I will tell you, we look like geniuses at a school committee, but it's a lot of the hard work of yourself and pushing this through.
Thank you.
It made it look like we were ahead of the game with COVID.
Because we were, because of her. It's interesting, because maybe many of us get the Train emails, advertisements. And I usually go click, 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 and click them off, and since I talked to you, I'm opening them up to see maybe if your picture is there or whatever, or part of it, so who knows?
Yeah. I guess a lot of districts have expressed their interest and already reached out to MasBO to connect with Train.
And how nice we were in the beginning of that whole thing. Yes, cutting edge.
Item number 12, events in the district, starting with the awards night next Tuesday at 6:00 P.M.
Correct.
And a week-long for that. We had a separate conversation, I'll pass along during that meeting, while this night is a great night to highlight the top 10, I can't help but wonder, is there a way that we can couple this with another night so the kids don't have to make a decision, one running out, making a quick change, he's on the crossfield, one coming in a little bit horrified because he's in a baseball cap, which was the college of his choice, but how do we do this where it's combined, where the school committee is not the highlight, it's the students and do that? So Jean and I quickly had a conversation with the principal, and against, good idea, but can we put it into practice, I think is always the challenge, but it fits nicely in the events of the district, because the next week is going to be jam-packed of, and rightfully so for all of these kids that are happening there. Anything else from the committee?
Mr. Owen, I don't mean to get in the middle of, or in front of, a German, but you need to take the school committee vote on the, on the negotiation, M.O.U.
Okay, I didn't know we were going to do it tonight.
I thought we were doing it the next one.
The next week? Okay.
I did.
Yep. I see no objection of doing that tonight. Did anybody have any objection to do that? Then I will entertain a motion to...
I just, I would recommend it only because the membership did take their action, and you can't sign off until that's done, so I think it just...
Yeah, we can put it behind us.
Perception would might be that it was delayed unnecessarily, and I just...
Got it.
Nope, I have no objection there. So I will entertain a motion to execute the union contract for the teachers as presented.
And I will make that motion.
Jean has a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? We'll need a roll call vote.
Two-thirds vote, yep.
Jean Fox?
Aye.
Steve Lo?
Aye.
Bob Black?
Aye.
Sheri Darrow?
Aye.
Steve Sylvia?
Aye.
Jen Lo?
Aye.
John Bar?
Abstain. By my math, the motion passes?
We did it.